We are about to begin the Weatherford College Board of Trustees meeting. Today's meeting is held at the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located on the campus of Weatherford College. Located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas to consider and act on the posted agenda. And so I'll call this meeting to order and ask Mr. Dowd if he would lead us in the invocation.
Yes, pray with me. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this beautiful winter day, Lord. We're thankful for the rain that you brought. Lord, I just pray and lift up all of our students, our faculty and staff at Weatherford College. Just pray that you be with them as they get this semester started, Lord, and keep them safe as we go through the semester. And what I just pray for the board and everyone present here as we deliberate. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Will you stand? I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Be seated. Agenda item number two, Ms. Worley, is public comment. We're individuals not on the agenda. Do we have anyone sign?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. How do you do that? We'll go to agenda item three, President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognitions. Recognition is in order for trustee Judy McAnally for setting up a meeting with Texas Health Resources, which could evolve into a landmark partnership between Weatherford College's allied health programs and Texas Health Resources. We are very excited to host a group from THR for a second meeting and thank trustee Judy McAnally for her good work to that end. Congratulations to the Weatherford College Nursing Programs on recently signing a transfer agreement with the University of Texas at Arlington. The agreement will allow graduates of WC's Bachelor of Science in Nursing program to enter the Master of Science in Nursing or Doctor of Philosophy in Nursing at UTA. Since the graduate programs are fully online, students may now seamlessly earn an MSN or PhD without ever leaving Weatherford College. The men's coyote basketball team has been nationally ranked this season for the first time in many years. Great things continue to happen in coyote athletics. Congratulations to WC basketball player Rodney Johnson and WC baseball player Robert Fortenberry on recently being named Northern Texas Junior College Athletic Conference Players of the Week. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Valerie Havens, an accounts payable assistant in the business office, has resigned effective 1/12/23. We thank Valerie for her service and wish her the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update. Spring 2023 enrollment as of census date was 5,068 students compared to 4,779 last spring, a 6% year-to-date increase. Additionally, while we increased both part-time and full-time enrollment, full-time enrollment grew at a faster pace. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Any questions or comments by the board, any member? Thank you, Ms. McAnally, for what you've done. We'll move to consent, the agenda item number four, consent agenda and financial reports. You see A through F, actually there is a little bit of a change. We're going to pull D, cooperative contract quotes on HVAC, air duct cleaning at the main campus. We're going to pull that and move that to next month. Are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda and financial reports as presented? If not, I'll ask if there's a motion to approve.
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. That's approved. We'll move to number five on the agenda, consideration possible action resolutions, authorizing method of procurement on construction, delegation of authority, delegees, selection of committee on stair and handrail replacement and repair project. Dr. Cantrell.
We've been in the process of getting ready to replace some stairwells in the stairways. And with that said, we're required by law to go to the procurement method that the board chooses. At this time, we would recommend to you that we go competitive sales proposals.
Anything else, Ms. Cantrell?
No, sir.
Any questions or comments, Dr. Farmer?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to authorize a resolution and authorize the method of procurement on construction, delegation of authority, and delegates, selection committee on stair and handrail replacements and repair as recommended by the administration? And Dr. Cantrell, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. That's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Move to agenda item number six, reports. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we normally provide you agenda item number six, A, the Academics and Student Services Report, which was prepared by Dr. T. and Mr. Indy. Additionally, we have the proposed 2023-24 tuition and fees, which Dr. Cantrell and the committee has prepared for you in writing for your consideration. We'll be coming back and looking at that for possible approval next month. And agenda item six, C, WCWC update. We have our executive dean, Kristen McLaughlin, here to give you a brief presentation on all of the great things that are happening at WCWC. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of executive dean McLaughlin. She has just done a phenomenal job. She and her team are taking that campus to new heights. So the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you, President Farmer and Board of Trustees, for having me come share a few of the great things that are going on in Wise County. And thank you all for the continued support for that campus. We certainly appreciate it. All righty. As you know, we started our classes in January 2000 and moved into that phenomenal, brand-new, beautiful building in 2012. And in 2021, we went ahead and it was refinanced because of the diligent work of you all, President Farmer, and the Wise County officials. With that bond refinancing, it's a savings of $12.4 million for the taxpayers. And this was only done through the strong partnership of you all in Wise County. So thank you again for that. With the refinancing, it allowed us to expand our ADN program and to continue to look at some more future programs to bring into Wise County. Growth is coming. Last year, one of our ISDs did approve a bond for new school buildings because of the growth. This year, there are three additional ISDs that are hoping to get it into the May election for bonds for new buildings, all because of the increased enrollment. As Judge J.D. Clark says, "Growth isn't just coming, it's here already, and we have to be ready for it." So like it or not, it's here. City of Decatur alone has 1,300 new homes in various stages of development as we speak. There's a huge three-story apartment complex being built. And just last night, Decatur ISD did vote to place their bond on the ballot for a new high school and to renovate the big high school for a middle school because of the growth. And city of Bridgeport, they are experiencing commercial growth and residential growth as well. They actually got a new Starbucks, scooters, and a Whataburger just this, within the last few months. So they've hit the big time. At least six new subdivisions between our campus and Bridgeport with over 2,000 homes in some various stages of development. So the growth is happening everywhere. And Bridgeport also has a bond proposal to hopefully go in, in May, to go to election for a new elementary school and then renovations to the middle school. This year, we added, because of the refinance, it allowed us to add the cohort, evening weekend cohort for our ADNs, which is wonderful, met the needs of the healthcare providers in our community. We have a waitlist every year for students to get into the program, so this was a wise way to expand what we already have. And if you notice the young lady in the blue scrubs in that picture, I know it's small. An interesting tidbit is, that's Kayla Stanford. She was one of the original graduates from Wise County's RN programs, and she's come back to teach. So that's pretty cool. Some of the additional course offerings we've put into place this year based on what students requested was a drawing class. It's our first studio class in Wise County. That class filled up in the first couple of days. So it's fun to watch. We have criminal law, and we have quite a few students that intend to major in criminal justice. We also have the introduction to the teaching profession, and we have added that to hopefully grow some students for the proposed bachelor's that's coming. We also have a lot of interested students in some of the other courses that we've added to give the kids some diversity with what they're getting to choose. Yeah, it's just a picture of the first studio class. Doesn't look real active, but they were all excited because it was the first time that they actually were drawing. And that instructor is a local to Wise County and has quite the following, so that's why his classes fill up very quickly. New leadership opportunities for students. We are so fortunate to have ambassadors this year. Those are our three that were chosen. They had to apply for the position, and they are just a wonderful addition to everything that we do. They help us with recruiting and with giving campus tours. It's nice to take them out when we go to the high schools and recruit. They all are bilingual, that's a huge help and plus, and they're a lot younger than me. So when we go to talk to the students, it's a lot easier for them to relate, and it's really added a whole lot for us. They're very appreciative that they receive the foundation scholarship each semester, and I already have students coming and asking when they can apply for next year. So it's growing. Expanding student life, when I first started this role, that was one of the things students came to me about, is they wanted a sense of community. They didn't feel they had that. So we've had the WC student jazz band out a couple of times, very well received by our students, faculty, and even community members come. We had our welcome week for the very first time, which was great. We had Friendsgiving last year and this year. Last year, we had about 30 people come. This year was over 60. So it's growing. It's just fun to be able to socialize outside of the classroom. We have a fitness room. It's in progress. And just this morning, we had a boxing bag thing delivered. We have pancake breakfast, Christmas ornament competition, BSM lunch was there today, serving and offering fellowship. We have our honor societies, and we have a Club WC Squared that serves the social part of the student's life and builds a sense of community. That's just some of the pictures of the different activities and things we've got going on. We also have the Wise Youth Violin Ensemble at our school. It's a low-cost program for all Wise County youth. It's funded by the Music and Arts Foundation and hopes to grow future WC students. This program draws a lot of students into our building. As you can see, that was one of the smaller concerts. I've told Dr. Marlet, I hope the fire marshal doesn't come in anytime soon because we covered the whole floor with seating, and it's a very well-received endeavor in the county. We have a very strong workforce education program. We have the industrial programs, CAD, HVAC, and welding. We just started a new HVAC cohort this week. Our welding classes remain at capacity each time, which is awesome. There's some of the guys in action, and ladies. We also have our full healthcare professions that are offered. And new this year, we have patient care technician with the EKG certification. Our coordinator has partnered with two of the local high schools to combine for a class, and the students actually come to our campus and receive their instruction. And the coordinator is currently working with Wise Regional Hospital to prepare a program for them, or PCT, so that they can build their employee bank as well. Some of their upcoming events, this is a fun event, the Wise County Weld Off. They, each area high school is invited to bring four of their top welders to our campus for an all-day competition, and it's a great community outreach and recruitment possibility for us. The students, by the end of the day, they look like they've been through every SAT program testing thing they could be. They are just worn out. It's so strenuous for them. And then the business breakfast meeting, we have a speaker coming, and we're going to do some recruitment for our classes for the workforce programs and advisory meeting. Cosmetology, they can get their associate's degree certification. The salon is open to the public, and boy, are they always busy. We also partner with Texas Workforce Commission. They actually office out of one of our buildings, or one of the offices in the workforce building for vocational rehab services and other service community programs that they offer. And we just started a small business grant this week with Twisted X. They have over 40 employees being trained. We know that that program is going to grow with Twisted X. They already are looking for future classes that they can enroll their employees in. And just this morning, the coordinator was contacted by a local EDC that wants to know how they can get in on the action. So we know it's going to grow. And that was just a picture of the, one of the places that we did go to for the kickoff. And that's why we're here. The possibilities are endless, and our students' futures are bright. And I can't say how thankful I am to each of you for allowing me to be in this position, and it's a great place to be. We thank you.
Dean McLaughlin, I appreciate you being here. This is great. I'd like to see you come back more often.
Oh, that's okay.
If that can be arranged. What is Twisted X?
Twisted X is a boot and shoe company, a national boot and shoe company. And they're all over the world. It's big. They have one smaller warehouse in Decatur. In fact, I got a lesson on that. When I went into the warehouse, it's the old WC college building is where it's housed. So they turned that into a smaller warehouse just for the local vendors and that.
Thank you. Dr. Marlet, I'm sure you have some comments?
I'm sure he does.
Well, first of all, that the Music and Arts Program is independently funded. It's not funded by taxpayers or the college, has no relationship to the college funds. It's independently funded, and we pay all our instructors independently. And it's a program, if you are not aware of it, it's for any student in Wise, any child from seven to 17 in Wise County who wants to have string lessons, violin, viola, or cello lessons, they're given free, free of charge to the parents. They must provide their own instrument, but Weatherford College has some instruments that they can check out to some of these students. So there's that relationship. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ma'am, can you tell me a little bit more about the Weld Off? That sounds kind of fun.
Yes, it is fun. We have, we coordinate with one of the local teachers, and he had been, the Wise County youth go to, I think it's Wichita Falls, and he had approached me when I was in workforce about doing a Weld Off. I said, "Sure, why not?" And it's been a lot of fun. And they come, and they have three or four different products that they have to create during that time.
Okay, so they create or?
They create. They're in our welding lab. And then we bring in county welders, different ones with different certifications to do the actual judging.
Okay.
So the students sweat it out all day, and they win prizes.
That's awesome.
It is fun. It's a good day. Yes, sir.
I may have missed it. What is, how many do you have on your faculty staff?
Six full-time instructors and then adjuncts.
How many?
Six full-time instructors and then very adjuncts.
And how many students do Weatherford have?
455 in the fall. We were up by about 25%, and we hope we continue to see that growth.
455. Approximately, how many adjuncts? Just to wrap up, I don't know.
Probably about 15.
Dr. Farmer, if you want to.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I again want to commend Dean McLaughlin and her team for the absolutely amazing job that they are doing up at WCWC. But I also really want to acknowledge and recognize Dr. Robert Marlet. The refinance of that facility up there was over a two-year process, and it frankly would not have happened without that man at the end of the table. And $12.4 million in taxpayer savings, that is transformational, and that's what's allowed this magic to happen. So, Dr. Marlet, thank you so much for all of your efforts and your support of our WCWC campus.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Well, thank you all very much.
Anything else from the board? Thank you for your comments and questions. We'll move to, thank you, ma'am, again.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item seven, future agenda items and meetings. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As previously mentioned, next month, we will be considering the adoption of the 2023-2024 tuition and fees, as well as the annual evaluation and employment contract of the college president.
Any questions or comments about that by the board? Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We'll move to agenda item number eight. Ms. Worley, can you make the announcements for today? And thank you for doing this.
You're very welcome. We have a very full spring semester tomorrow in this very room. We're going to have the Jack Harvey Academy of Exemplary Teachers. We'll have about 40 local educators that'll be recognized for their efforts. We have a slew of upcoming home games for baseball, softball, and basketball, so mark your calendars to try to come out and cheer on our coyotes. On Monday, February 13th, in the Stray Room, our ex-students will host their monthly luncheon. And on February 17th, in the Altec Fine Arts Center, we'll have a guest pianist, Evan Mitchell, in to do a concert. And then, I'm really excited, on February 21st, our Fine Arts Department is putting together our first-ever Mardi Gras festival. There's going to be a gumbo competition, cook-off. Their cafeteria is going to bring a ton of food. The jazz band's going to perform. It's just going to be a fun night. Everyone's encouraged to come out, dress up, and have some fun.
Thank you, Ms. Worley. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll move to agenda item number nine, closed session. The time I have is approximately 2:21, and we will end the open meeting and convene in the closed session as stated in the agenda items, nine, A through C, in 2:25, about three or four minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
It's four o'clock and I appreciate everybody waiting. I'm sorry we had a lot to talk about. It is four o'clock. I will call the public session back into order and we will go back to an item that I just jumped right past and I apologize to the board for that. Six B reports proposed 20, 23, 24 tuition fees. Dr. Kentrell and I'd ask you, if you can, if you have any comments or suggestions about that item. We were given a handout and it's very useful and I apologize for missing that before we went into.
It was intended to be written at this time, but I was going to give some lead in into it a little bit. The committee met, the tuition fee committee, and the recommendations that have come forward, we have not finalized at this point because of, we're not that far along in the budget to know the final figures that we're, the funds we're going to need, but, and also where are we with the state appropriations for this year. But with that said, the recommendation at this time, and I sent that out to you all this morning, you probably didn't have time, and if you would review those during this next month, and if you want to call me at any time and ask for explanation, I'll be more than glad to go over those with you. But at this time, we're looking at the, what we've been doing for the last few years, trying to catch up with the tuition rates for the in-district students increasing by seven percent. The Wise County, Wise County, and out of dist- well, the out-of-district WCWC would be eight percent, and the out-of-state would go up by nine percent. We would, has been discussed at this time to add a technology fee, and the reasoning behind that is the high cost of technology, both administrative and student support. And then we've got some mail plans and some in-and-out charges, an application fee increase, and most of the, what we're trying to do there is just cover our costs. And so, if you'll review those and we'll be ready to come back with a final recommendation to you in March.
Once again, I apologize.
That's okay. That's fine.
All right. Now we'll move to-
Can I make a comment?
Oh, yes, please.
You know, I think it'd be interesting for the community to have some information when you come forward next month with your proposal. Just kind of give us some insight into what education across the state costs. I mean, when you start looking at institutions I went to, Texas Tech, and when you look at their semester costs, it was far more than when I graduated in the late 1800s, I think. So I, and I think as people, as they start making decisions for their children, they need to start looking at SMU, TCU, Texas Tech, other colleges, and just have a comparison of what a value a community college like Weatherford College presents, because it, it's an astounding difference compared to going to another, another education, especially if someone is thinking about doing this for two years for their child before they may go to another. So, I think that would be very informative and interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Anybody else? Any comments? All right. So I, what I was going to do is go to agenda item number 10, and we have Mr. Bill Warren here, and I would ask Mr. Warren if you'd like to come, and this is consideration possible action on real property. This is the stable that has been discovered that is located on the Carter property, and so Mr. Warren's here to give us an update and to make recommendations, and we appreciate you being here, Mr. Warren.
Well, thank you very much for having me again. I feel like I'm almost a fixture here at this point. Recently, the, as you all know, the, as I had pictures on here a little earlier about there was a part of the roof that was missing from the stable, and I did have a young man come out with a very large tarp. How he found one that big, I don't quite know, but he did cover the open area of the stable before the last rain. So we've now had two rains, two really good rains, and so the stable has been secured from the outside weather. I'm not exactly sure, Mr. Smith, what you want me to do on this. I know I had corresponded with you about a couple of the things, and I talked with Dr. Kentrell about how to organize the financing, not the finance, that's the wrong way to say it, but the collection of money and how that would work, and because, gotta have, I sort of have to know the legal framework that we're going to operate in, and the parties that we're going to operate with, before I really know where we need to go next.
So my, my, what will help me, because I want the board to, to know, but also I want you to be able to answer any questions by individual board members. If you can, explain, I mean, this is a, this is a very historically significant building. It's a stable, and when you find properties like that, situations like that, what kind of an application can you make? I know you've talked about this in the past, but go through it again. If you, if you were going to undertake the application process to get this stable approved, when would you make a submission on that? What type of forms would you fill out? What kind of obligations? If, if a designation is made, what kind of obligations does that attach to the building or the site? Can you go through that again? I know you've talked about that.
Okay. Actually, there are two, sort of two things. The way I look at it is two different things here. One is an application for a historical marker through the Texas Historical Commission, and then another would be the renovation and- Commission, and then another would be the renovation and restoration of the building itself. So I kind of look at those as two different things. But as far as the first, as far as the application to the Texas Historical Commission for a marker, there are two kinds of historical markers. There's what the commission describes as a subject marker and then there's another that they describe as a registered Texas historical landmark. The difference between the two is a subject marker, there is absolutely nothing, no restrictions whatever on the building and what, in any way, shape or form. For example, there, the double lock cabins that were over at Holland Lake Park that were recently moved to the DOS museum, that was a subject marker on that. So there was no need to have to go back to the state to ask anything about moving those cabins. Now, with a registered Texas historical landmark, it provides, you can ask the THC, if somebody wants to do something to the building, if they want to move it, they want to destroy it or something like that, then a party can ask the THC to say, hey, wait a minute. These people said that they really liked this building. Their predecessors, whoever signed that form, said that they wanted to keep it. There is a 90-day hold on, that the THC says, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's think about this for a little bit rather than just moving ahead with that. I would note that the old Weatherford College was a registered Texas historical landmark and that building was obviously demolished to bring the school out here. So it's not a preventative, totally 100% that you can do nothing with the building in the future. It just delays the process a little bit to have time and some breathing room to think about what to go do with it.
So which, which designation, which kind are you...
I would, I would like to see the registered Texas historical landmark. I, I, I get the impression today that this board is interested in preserving the building for the future because it is an incredibly unique property. I mean, how many people can say they had a French count live here? So I, I would think, but again, that's your feeling today, or my thinking of your feeling today, that doesn't necessarily mean that the people coming along in, say, 20 years are going to feel the same way about it. So again, that gives a little breathing room if people, if you're, people who feel y'all's position in 20 or 30 years, if they feel a little bit different about it, it does give a little stop to say, hey, wait a minute, let's think about this before we do go do something drastic to the building.
When would you need to submit a registered Texas historical application?
I, I take it upon myself, which is part of where I have found out all this information on it, to go on and prepare. There's an application form that the Texas Historical Commission just released. The opening for the period is March the 1st through May the 15th. They have to be submitted by May the 15th for this, for this go-round. Otherwise, we have to wait another year for that. So they are accepting applications right now. It's a hundred dollar filing fee, which I'll be more than glad to cover for the application, whether it's a subject marker or a registered Texas historical landmark. I've gotten the narrative written up and, and I dropped one off to Dr. Farmer's office the other day and I believe I've sent it to Ms. Kentrell also, Dr. Kentrell, excuse me, for the narrative. That's pretty much what I had already presented on the background of the stable. It also, because the stable is a subject of the marker itself, it does give descriptions about the stable and what it contains. So that's pretty much, I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
Assuming that the marker is approved and goes through the Historical Commission and approved and all those things happen, do whose, is, does the college have any obligation to maintain and restore this building as, as it goes through time, it'll deteriorate and so, or any restoration cost? And there's more to that cost than a hundred dollars. There's about another $1,700 for that marker. So who pays, who pays that?
Okay. The, the process through the Historical Commission, they will take until, I think it's August of this year to make a decision. They are limited to 171 markers throughout the state of Texas. So it is possible that this application could be turned down, end of story, right there. If they accept that, then they come back to, it would be me as the sponsor for the marker, the sponsor for the application, to say, okay, we've, we've accepted your, your nomination or the application, and then they would give us the ability to say we want a marker or not. The current price of the marker is just about $1,200 and I would not expect the school to pick up that cost. I will try to find somebody who will give the money, donate the money toward purchasing the marker. After the Texas Historical Commission gets the money for the marker, then they will, they figure out the wording on that. They will send it to the marker chair of the Parker County Historical Commission and we'll look over the wording of it, see if we agree with the wording, if we like the wording or don't like the wording, make suggestions and edits it to it if we don't like it. But once the wording is decided, and by the way, it has to fit on the size of their plaque, once the wording is decided, then the Texas Historical Commission will send it to the foundry. And it's been recent experience and it takes about a year or a little more for the foundry to cast the marker and send it back to the originator.
Yeah. We no longer cast those in Texas. They're sent out to some other state. I think it's Oklahoma.
Yes. The, the, the firm that the Texas Historical Commission used was bought out by another company and that canceled the contract that the THC had with that company. And I think it's Ohio that they're going to now for, for casting markers. But as, as far as renovation in the future, to my knowledge, it does not require the owner of the property to keep the, to maintain the building.
Okay. Anything else, Dr. Farmer?
I will point out that it's lasted 133 years. So, and it is in very, very good condition. So I don't think that it's going to require much more than maybe having the roof fixed in the next 50 or 60 years.
Dr. Marland, I called you, Dr. Farmer. I apologize.
No kidding.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for, all right. So I'm trying to figure out how I can move the ball forward on this, but yet not get ahead of myself on this. And so, do you need, would it assist you in moving forward on this process, understanding that there are no guarantees about what might, but to authorize, if you were authorized by the, by the board, Weatherford College, to prepare a registered Texas historical marker application, bring that to the next board meeting to be reviewed and hopefully there would be, you already got it here. Okay. All right.
I don't know why, something prompted me at about 5:07 this afternoon. I thought, you know what, I'll just print one off. So I did.
Is that, is that one that can be, can be submitted as an application?
Yes, sir. It just needs the signature of whoever the authorized representative is for the school and then a notary needs to sign it. I would have to, I would need a copyback of that because I would need to submit the entire package, including the narrative and any of the supporting documentation through the Parker County Historical Commission because they're the only organization that can present an application to the state of Texas.
Okay. I think one other thing that the board might want to do is to consult with the county attorney before, before they take action today.
Okay.
All right. So I think to put this...
Would you like for me to give this to the attorney?
If you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. So do you think you can come back on March the 2nd if we can get this rescheduled?
Texas Independence Day.
Okay.
Yes.
I like that. I like that. All right. So hate to put this off another few days, but I appreciate you here. I don't think I'm going to try to make a motion today, but anyway.
I appreciate y'all's consideration to this. I know it's not something that's on your agenda normally and, but I do appreciate your, your patience with me on this. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your patience with us. Go ahead. Next meeting is March, March 9? Okay. That'll be March 9. I'm sorry. Consideration, possible action, moving to number 11. Consideration, possible action, appointment, pluggment, evaluation, reassignment, duty, discipline, dismissal, public officer or employee. We have anything like that, Mr. Curley, that we need to add today?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think not.
As you may, we'll go to agenda item number 12. Adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's, I made that motion.
I second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's approved. Thank you very much for adjourn.